Good evening, I'd like to call the order. The Planning Commission meeting for Guthrie Thursday, March 11, 2021. Roll call.
Don McBride.
Yes.
Joe Chappell absent. Abe Gassimpor.
Here.
And Chris Bryant.
Here.
And we have a quorum.
All right, are there any general public comments not related to any item on the agenda tonight? Okay. Item number three is approval of previous minutes from the January 21, 2021 regular meeting.
Making motion for approval.
Second.
In a second, all right. Whoops. And so, let me see, Abe Gassimpor and Chris Bryant.
Yes.
All right, perfect.
Item number four is PC application number 20-013, discussion and possible action on a request for approval of a preliminary subdivision plat for 307 residential lots on a 95 and 1/2 acre parcel known as Mission Hills Phase Two located in the southwest quarter of Section 20 Township 16 North, Range Two West, between Davis Road and the existing Mission Hills residential subdivision. Staff report.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Most of you are probably familiar with this. It was just recently that this particular parcel was approved for a planned unit development. The original, they originally were looking for 314 lots through the planned unit development process because of some of the conditions, it got reduced down to the 307. So, tonight, the preliminary plat is for the 307 lots, as you indicated. There were, as I said, some accept or some conditions, as well as exceptions, that were granted through that. I'm not going to go through those because they were in your staff report, but I will just say that the preliminary plat does reflect almost 100, well, 100% to the planned unit development site plan that was approved, and it also met all of the conditions that were put forth with the planned unit development. The eastern part of that particular subdivision that ties into Mission Hills was not granted any exceptions, so it had to meet the requirement, minimum code requirement, so it had to have 60 feet of road right-of-way, minimum of 6,000 square-foot lots, 25-foot setbacks, all of that stuff that the current code requires, which it has. The other portion did receive the exceptions, and like I said, I won't go into it, but it does allow for smaller lots, greater lot coverage in that. One of the other conditions, though, is that there had to be an entry onto Prairie Grove, which did not originally appear. They have provided such. It'll be Mission Hills Drive will now connect into Prairie Grove. That will create another avenue or another area for traffic to come in and out, which should help with the neighborhood, which was one of their concerns. Just for clarification, in case, the actual approval said Hobart Lane, and it comes out on Mission Hills. Like many a things, when it's going through the public hearing process, and even at the public hearing, things basically are like, you know, in this area type of thing, or maybe this road. Once the engineer got going in that, it was more feasible in that from topography standpoint, general traffic circulation, et cetera, to bring it out on Mission Drive versus Hobart Lane there. One of the provisions in the PUD is it does authorize me to allow for minor amendments to the PUD, which this would fit into, because again, it's meeting the intent, which was to have a driveway connect to Prairie Grove in that area, in that, and it's literally probably 100-foot difference in that. So I just wanted to have that for clarification in that. All of the, or the plat was sent out to all the utilities, including rural water, electric, gas, our Public Works, as well as our Police and Fire Department, and at this time, there were no comments from any of those. It did go to our engineer, Myers Engineering. They did have a few additional comments, which actually, the plat you see tonight already reflected those. The only thing that's really left, and I know they're working on it, is a preliminary drainage report that is required as far as the preliminary plat. So that was the only condition that we had put on there, and that was just, they have to submit that before they would submit any type of final plat or improvement plans. So with that, staff is recommending approval, the preliminary plat, and put it back to the commission if you have any questions.
All right, and the applicant is here. Is there anything you'd like to present?
David Box, Fox 22, Culquor Drive in Oklahoma City. Zach Roche with the developer, and then Chris Anderson, the engineer, were happy to address any questions that the commission may have, but we certainly agree with staff's findings.
Okay. Any questions for the applicant?
I have a question.
Yes, sir.
I understand this is a pod, but are you just approving all residential, or is any commercials associated with your project?
Yeah, so this is-
Mainly residential.
Just residential, yes, sir.
Just residential.
Yes, sir.
That's it.
Okay. Any further questions or discussion comments? Most of our discussion was had last time.
Yeah. I'll make a motion for approval.
Okay. So Abe has got a motion.
I'll second it.
And second. All right, Don McBride.
Yes.
Abe Gassimpor.
Yes.
And Chris Bryant.
Yes.
All right. Proof three O.
Thank you, gentlemen.
Thank you.
Our next item is number five, PC application number 21-001, discussion and possible action on a request for a special use permit to allow for a plant nursery with no buildings or structures in the R2 general residential zoning district for a 6.16 acre property located adjacent to Walnut Drive, west of the Walnut Drive and Mockingbird Drive intersection. Staff report.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. This parcel may be familiar as well. I think it was in 2019 in that, yeah, in 2019. The applicant had looked to rezone this particular parcel to agriculture. That rezone was not approved. So now they're back. As part of the zoning code, it allows for a plant nursery with no structures and no buildings within the R2, which is our general residential. The particular parcel is zoned R2, so obviously, that's why they're coming forth with the special use permit. One of the things about this parcel that, you know, came out previously was a significant part of it is in the floodway, and another portions of it is in the flood zone. So development with buildings in that does make it difficult. Just like when it was talked about at the rezone stage, the comprehensive plan does designate this parcel for agricultural purposes. The adjacent greenhouses that there are zoned agricultural. They're obviously looking to utilize this to help expand their business, so they have some additional room. Through the special use permit process, there are a number of factors that should be considered by the Planning Commission, as well as the City Council. That was provided in my staff report, and even staff's take on it. The only other thing I wanted to add is that, you know, because it's designated ag open space, and because of the restrictions that there are with the flood plain and the flood way, from a land use standpoint, it honestly is, makes sense, or is probably conducive for this type of use in that. So there's still an ability to have, again, use of the property in that. So with that, based on, well, I will say that there was one letter, I wanted to add, there was one letter that you guys received that was in the packet, and then I provided you another letter that came after the packet was out. Both of those, you were provided, and obviously, there's some public here to speak. But based on the analysis and the factors to be considered for a special use permit, staff recommends that the special use permit be approved with the condition that the driveway approach at the northern portion of the property be brought up to city code standards, and the driveway meet the requirements set forth in Article 5, Section 10, Paragraph 10.9, which is paved access driveways required in residential districts. So that concludes my staff report, and I'll give back to the commission if you have any questions.
All right, is the applicant here?
Yes.
Okay. If we have any questions for the applicant first, and then we can hear from anyone else. Name an address for the record.
My name is Jesse Tischelzer. My residential address is 2000 North Sooner Road. Our business address is, well, depending on what street you come in, 1101 North Walnut Street.
All right.
Are you, I understand, I mean, the way I look at this, planting a tree, it does not require a permit. So could you explain to me exactly what you're going to do?
What we'll do is we'll actually roll out ground cover on the grass, so that, oops, sorry, so that the, obviously, so the grass doesn't grow through it, and then we'll put down either sprinklers, overhead sprinklers, or we'll use drip tape so that we can plant fall chrysanthemums, or this time of year, we would be using petunias or some other cold hardy plant that can handle a light freeze, and we'll be growing that stuff out in the open. And then, you know, middle of May through probably about August, there'll be nothing out there, and then obviously, in the wintertime, we can't grow anything outside either, so it would be a late spring.
Does it require any kind of environmental report? I mean, are you going to cause any kind of smell or something in the neighborhood because of all this?
No.
No smell in the-
No. I wish my flowers smelled good enough to you guys smell them a block away, but unfortunately, they're not.
Are you going to expand your drive to, from your other facilities that you have to the 70s? This is the same facility, right, on the, on the-
Yes, it is. It's the same facility.
Are you going to exceed any more traffic?
No. There will be any, any, any more traffic will-
Anymore?
It will not increase, no. Not whatsoever.
Well, you're only doing it for starter plants, aren't you? Like where you grow-
Well, like I said, there's only, in the fall, our mums, obviously, they go outside. We grow them outside now in the fall, so they can handle the cold and freezing. Perennial plants that can handle cold can be out there. It's a very limited amount of stuff that we can do. I'm not even sure that we can actually-
So you're selling them to garden centers?
What do you say, three months a year?
Right, probably, it'll probably be, ah, March, April, and a little bit of May, and then, when do we plant our mums?
September, October.
September, October.
Or August, September, October.
So maybe, maybe six months of the year, there'll be plants out there.
All right, thank you. I guess we'll hear from any citizens who'd like to speak. Is anyone here to speak on this item? Hi there, name an address for the record.
My name's Alyssa Goss, and I live at 11015 Magnolia Court. And I just wanted to come here to share my reasons why I oppose this permit for a new plant nursery in our residential area. Our family's property is adjacent to the greenhouse property. When we moved into our home in the winter of 2018, the noise related to the operations was less frequent, mostly during normal business hours, and the access road was less traveled. Over the past few years, traffic and noise have steadily increased with their expanding operations. The trash can located behind our property are a hotspot for activity. They use a forklift to haul trash sometimes as early as 4:30 in the morning and as late as midnight, which I can provide information on. This has at times created unpleasant living conditions for my family and I, especially after we welcomed a new baby a few months ago. A good night's sleep interrupted by noise is few and far between. If we had been aware about the noise level when we purchased this home, we would not be here. I have concerns that this expansion will affect the value of our home negatively in the future and our family's quality of life. The other issue that I've experienced is the traffic on the access street that conjoins my property and the property in question to be used for this new plant location. There is a lot of traffic throughout the day and night. This is a residential area, and vehicles often drive at high rates of speeds down the access road. This naturally causes fear for my children's safety since our property connects to this access road. No parent should have to worry about their child playing outside in a residential area. I cannot support this expansion, as it will surely only increase traffic and activity in the areas surrounding our home, and as a result, create more noise and safety concerns. I appreciate your time hearing my concerns and taking them into consideration when you make this decision. Thank you.
Thank you. Hi there, name and address for the record.
Hello, my name is Andrea Bennett, and I live at 1103 North Walnut Street. I live actually adjacent to the property as well. I agree with my neighbor here about the traffic down the dirt road. It causes, it has caused a significant impact to my property. I have red dirt that is all over my white siding on my house, and recently had a power wash because I'm trying to, you know, make, maintain the condition of my home, and so I'm now, now I'm having to paint my entire home because the dirt won't come off of my home. So it has really been a not positive experience living next door to our neighbors at the greenhouse. I don't have anything about someone expanding their operations or, you know, being entrepreneurs and growing their business. I just don't feel that it's appropriate to, for us to sacrifice our property value for the behest of someone else to grow their income. I recently had my house home appraised, and the property value of my home has been depreciated, so not very positive. The traffic is horrific. There are big semi trucks that drive by at all hours of the night, semi trucks that park on the side of your house. You wake up, and there's a big 18-wheeler truck outside your, your front door. They drive over your property. I've had several occurrences where the semi trucks have rolled over my front yard. They knock down the traffic signs that are in front of the little dirt road driveway that they've made, which is not appropriate. If that was something that I did, I don't think that the city would look too friendly to me to do that type of stuff. So I feel with the expansion of the plant nursery that it's going to bring additional traffic. They'll have to drive through there and get over there, and they'll be tending the land, so that's going to be loud. When COVID hit, I had to go to work in remote from my home 24 hours a day, seven days a week, I'm on call. So I had to move my office from the side of my home that faces the road to the other side of my home because it's loud. It's loud. You hear the, the forklifts, the trucks, the, I don't even know what you call them, these big tractors. It's super, super loud. So I've had to get some type of noise dimming stuff in my office to prevent the sounds because I'm on the phone all the time. I'm in technology, so when something breaks, I have to be on the phone. So it's made my working conditions not possible. Um, let's see, I had, also, traffic is blocked on the road when the trucks come in. You can't, I can't get out of my driveway. I have to sit there and wait for them to maneuver into the driveway, because really and truly, that's not set up for 18-wheelers to be turning into that space. We also have damage to the road that's in front of the bridge that's on that street. I don't know if you guys are familiar with the condition of the bridge that's on Pine Street, but based on what's occurring over there on Walnut Street, I believe that our bridge is going to be looking just like the condition of the bridge that's on Pine Street. I feel like it needs to be tended to. They patched a pothole that was in the ground right after we had the winter storm, but it still looks a mess. You still have to, like, dodge around the pothole in order to not tear up your vehicle, and I feel like that's being caused by not only the bus traffic that goes up and down the road, but the semi trucks. I don't believe that that was, is adequate enough for them to be coming in and out like that. The lights, when you are, I feel so sorry for my neighbors that live right next to the bright lights. It's bright light, bright light. So I don't know if any of you guys live next to an industrial complex, because that's what it has become, but it is not what I felt would be put next to me when I bought my home. It's sad that we have to keep coming here to speak on behalf of how we feel, because we've, we've done this before, and they've been told no, but it's, we still have to keep coming up here to protect the community in which we live, which I don't feel like that's fair to us as residents that live here and pay taxes and are citizens of Guthrie. There are several of my neighbors that were not able to make it here tonight. I was barely able to make it here tonight because of the nature of my job, but I came here to speak to make sure that someone reflected the views of the neighborhood. My neighbor Ryan Cottin is against them expanding their operations, and also, my neighbor Alton Ingram, who lives on Pine Oak, he is actually in San Antonio for his wedding anniversary, so he was unable to make it here tonight as well, and he also is opposing the expansion of their operations. My biggest concern is this is going to bring additional noise, additional traffic, and it's going to be nonstop. It's going to be nonstop. So I don't know if you guys like to live next to something where it's going on all the time, but that's not what I envision for my life at 50 years old, to be living next door to an industrial complex. And like, another concern that I have is, I'm from Guthrie, and I have relatives that own property in, we call it the elbow. The elbow is a flood zone. They were forced to sell their property and move out of that land because they could not be lived upon. So what gives them the right to expand and use the land and not my family? So is it a black or white thing? Is it, is it, you know, I'm just trying to understand, what is the, you know, the consensus of the group or the consensus of the town about why it is okay for certain people to be able to utilize their property and certain other people not be able to utilize their property? I don't want to get down to that, but if they are approved for that, that is something that I would like to understand why, because it's not fair. If it's flood plain and you can't do anything on that land, it should be left alone. And when you buy a property and you knew that that was the property and how it was set up, then that's just how it goes. If you did not want that property and you knew it was zoned that way, you shouldn't buy it. That's just my take on it. And I understand that the greenhouse has been there for many years. I grew up on Walnut Street, right next to Fogarty, so I'm very familiar with the growth and the expansion of the, of the greenhouse. It's been here all my life, but it's, it's, it's just not something that I want to continue to live by. And it's just not a good and positive experience for the residents who live over on Walnut Street. And that's, that's it.
Thank you very much. Would anyone else like to speak?
Hi.
Hello, name and address for the record.
My name's Teresa Lamb, and I live at 1111 Magnolia Court. That's the property directly adjacent to the dumpsters on the property. I'm here just to let you guys know that I object to the special use permit being issued. I feel like it'll not only lead to a decline in property value, but will lead to an increase in traffic, not only on Walnut, but also on what we're calling the service road, and further the public nuisance and lead to additional prohibited unnecessary noise in our neighborhood. In case you guys aren't aware with the definitions of those terms, when I say "public nuisance" and "prohibited unnecessary noise," City Ordinance Section 131C just defines a public nuisance as one which affects, affects at the same time, an entire community or neighborhood or, or any considerable number of persons, although the extent of the annoyance or damage inflicted upon the individuals may be unequal. That's the definition of public nuisance, and I think you can agree after hearing, you know, what other neighbors have said, that they're creating a public nuisance. Section 14-102 defines unnecessary noise prohibited and states, "No person shall make, continue to cause to be made, or continued any excessive unnecessary or unusually loud noise or any noise which either annoys, disturbs, injures, or endangers the comfort, repose, health, peace, or safety of others within the limit of the city." I think after hearing, you know, what others have said and what you're about to hear from me, there is no doubt that there is unnecessary prohibited noise going on in our neighborhood at all times. In just the three weeks since the receipt of this, the letter requesting the special use permit, there have been at least 16 instances they've violated the public noise ordinance and the unnecessary noise ordinance. The week of March 1st, there was only one day, one, Monday through Friday, one day that I was not awakened before 6:45 a.m. by activity at the dumpsters. After getting, you know, I called the police department to make a noise complaint. They say, "Sorry, we can't do that. You need to talk to code enforcement." So I go to code enforcement, and they say, "Sorry, we can't help you because we don't know what to do. We haven't been here that long." So finally, he digs out a form from 1995 that he had stuck in a drawer and said, "I think this is the route you need to go. You need to file a formal complaint with the city." So I did that. I filed a formal complaint with the city on March 10. If you guys would like a copy of that, I've got extras for you, addressing the Norris Ordinance complaints that we have and the violations of the city code. Since, you know, this is not, this is not a new issue. We know that it was brought to the attention of the Planning Commission and the City Council back in the fall of 2019 and beginning of 2020. Between April 24, 2020 and June 28, 2020, there were, I've logged over, let me see, 24 separate days with 48 alleged violations, ranging in times from 6:44 a.m. to 10 p.m. I mean, they're basically dictating my waking hours. They wake me up at 4:30, and if they're out there at 10, by God, if you're trying to sleep, good luck. And most of the summer, it goes all day and all night, as you heard Alyssa say, you know, they're out there sometimes at midnight. In addition to the issues raised in my complaint, there are cars speeding up and down the service road at all hours of the night, stopping at the dumpsters repeatedly. There are at times 18-wheelers overnight behind my home with their engines running. You know, we joked one year it was Super Bowl, and there's an 18-wheeler out there running. It's snowy outside, we joked, you know, maybe we should take him some chili dogs. But, you know, it's that, it happens all the time. They leave the radio on loud enough at the greenhouses that you can clearly hear the words from the music when you're sitting outside. So going and sitting on the back porch and enjoying a cup, cup of coffee and watching the birds in the morning, it's not going to happen, not unless you like coma or Spanish music. Forklifts drive up and down the service road backwards with the backing alert on the entire time. I have video of a man driving the forklift backwards with the beep the whole way, gets to the dumpster, stops, doesn't dump anything in the dumpster, turns the forklift around and drives it all the way backwards, back down the service road with their beeping lights up. The bottom line is, the property owners have been made aware of the complaints of the neighbors by phone, email, and in person over the last five years. Things have not gotten better. They've just continually gotten worse. The questing party previously advised in their proposed expansion that was denied in 2019, that their expansion's not going to bring any more jobs or tax revenue into our town. It's our understanding, after talking to code enforcement, they've already been allowed special use for this area by being allowed commercial dumpsters in a residentially zoned area. They've repeatedly shown they don't care to abide by the city ordinances in place. They're not good neighbors. They're not good stewards of the community, and they do not follow the rules. And they also, they repeatedly annoy, disturb, and injure the comfort, health, safety, and peace of myself and others within our community. If it's, it is for these reasons, as well as the reasons stated by my neighbors, that I request that you deny the requests, their request for special use permit. And, you know, I know that, you know, we can all say these things, but in my complaint, my complaint statement is due on Monday, so I will attach the videos and documentation that I have for all of that to produce to the city attorney to determine if that needs to go forward. But, you know, the, there are issues with conflict between their neighbors. It's not just their physical neighbors. It's also business community leaders and people that also own other businesses in our area. One thing that I wanted to point out to you guys is a Facebook post that just kind of, kind of sums up what we deal with whenever we try to get anything done. And if I could, can I hand these to you? There is a Facebook post that was commented on by the owner about another Guthrie business owner, and the other page I handed you is the list of just the, the issues that we've had since the letter was sent out to us. So those are the dates and times that we've been bothered just since this letter was received. And that's all I've got.
All right, thank you so much.
Thank you.
All right, anyone else? Okay. Would the applicant like to respond to any of the concerns? And if we have any further questions for the applicant?
One at the same time?
Yeah. Yeah.
One thing I want to make really clear about when she was just up there speaking, we never work at 6:45 a.m. The dumpster complaint is a complaint on the city.
We don't dump the dumpsters. The city trucks come in the morning-
It's not us. It's the trucks dumping the dumpsters. So the city probably won't do anything because we called the complaint. You're complaining about your trash services. It's not us. We don't work at 6:45 a.m. We don't work at midnight. Those hours that she's talking about are not, are not our hours. The dumpsters are not us dumping them. Also, that's not a access road. That's our driveway. That's, that's not-
I was going to ask, is that a private drive?
Yes.
Okay.
It's our driveway. And so if there's, if their kids are scared to get run over in it, I hope they're not in it anyway. They shouldn't be playing on our property.
They shouldn't be on our property. There's fences on all those-
That's your private property.
Right. There's fences behind all those houses as well.
Yes.
And we were going to put up a fence, but we can't because it's in a floodway.
Floodway. And we still plan on trying to do something so they can't look at the property in any which way, but that's, it's up to what we can do with the floodway there, so. Anyways, it's not an access road. It is our driveway. I want to clear that up.
And one other thing that we did do, or I don't know your name, but at some point in the, in the past-
It's Andrea Bennett, I believe.
There's five feet of her fence put on our property. I don't think we owned it when it was first put there. We signed over a quit claim to it and gave her the five feet of property rather than fighting it.
That's irrelevant. That was just-
There's a lot of, there's a lot of irrelevant things.
We, we went and-
Hey, I'm sorry. Excuse me, excuse me.[1786.11]
Excuse me, excuse me. Can we? Thank you.
I paid a lawyer to give her the property as a gesture of good neighbor.
We just, we want to, can we...
Ma'am, they're at the podium right now.
We did not interrupt you. We just, we want to explain that we aren't horrible neighbors.
It was our property. We gave it to her.
We gave it to her, yes, literally. And if any of them want to sell their houses, I'd be interested in purchasing your houses if you're so unhappy there, too. I would, and that's not, to be rude, that's not a joke or anything. I'm serious.
Please, please, please.
And I think Mr. Alston Ingram Jr. sent a letter. I see we have it in the packet. Just about the same time that he obviously got this, he went and left us a Google review that said, "Don't care for it," which he's obviously never bought our property.
He's never purchased our property.
That's the kind of gentleman he is. He actually went around last time and did a signature petition, which is exactly what you're supposed to do, but leaving Google reviews is just, come on. He's obviously has a personal vendetta against us, more so than just this property that's three blocks away from his house. And the red dirt on whoever's house was complaining about red dirt on it. The driveway has been coated like for years with crushed asphalt. We haven't had the money to pave it yet because we can't expand it. We're growing and all this good stuff. So there's no red dirt on that driveway whatsoever. That's just red dirt that we all have on our houses.
Which you can ask, I believe they had to check that out and go there and check it one day.
Yeah, Dan was just there the other day taking no video.
Yeah, they, well, no, they had to go check it one day to check, see if there was dirt on the fence and there wasn't.
And staff's recommendation is to improve the driveway?
No. Staff's recommendation is to bring it up to code for residential driveways. What our code says for residential driveways is the first 15 feet from the edge of pavement has to be concrete. After that, it has to be an all-weathered surface. So we have certain requirements for the actual driveway approach, but like I said, it's only the first 15 feet. It's a residentially zoned property in that, so by code, the entire driveway does not have to be paved. Now, if, you know, the commission or even the city council wants to put that as a condition, they can do that through a special use permit. Obviously, you know, I'm sure the applicant would have some say in that, but all we were recommending is that it be brought up to current code.
And current code says that they can do a concrete approach, but they can do something different on the driveway?
Yeah, the first 15 feet from edge of pavement is all that's required, and that's any residential district. So even properties that are on, let's say, one and a half acres and, you know, you're at the back of the property and you have 300 feet of driveway or something, you're only required to do 15 feet and after that, an all-weathered surface. So you can't have just dirt, but they have, yeah.
With the 18-wheelers that you bring in there on your delivery schedules, you've got a narrow driveway there now, and you're going to bring it up to a concrete approach, I'm going to assume?
Right.
Which should be wide enough to accommodate an 18-wheeler without even getting on your property or somebody else's property?
Yes, that's not a problem whatsoever.
Back into a normal driveway.
That driveway's nowhere near the neighbor's property where it would ever encroach on that, but yeah, we would have it.
I'm familiar with the drive.
And is it the city that provides your trash dumpster service?
Yeah, because I was just going to clarify, just like anywhere in town, the city contracts with Waste Connections. We don't have, obviously, any full-time employees or equipment, so we contract with Waste Connections to provide trash service throughout the community, both commercially and residentially.
Yeah, they've started picking up my trash, you know, once a week before 5:00 a.m., so.
Yeah, they get to my house usually around 6:00 something.
Right. We'd be happy to move it, but there's houses all along our property, so if we move it from their house, it's going to be on the next person's house, so maybe we should just rotate and everybody gets dumpsters once a month.
When your 18-wheelers come in, y'all have a set time that you have them come in to load or unload your deal? Is it early morning hours or is it...
It's delivery, so, no, it's delivery, so no, we don't, receiving hours, we don't really have any. It's when delivery trucks show up. I wish I had like an estimate on how many trucks it is, but it's during certain seasons we have some, and then there's months where we have zero semis coming in.
Right. In the fall, we get all of our soil probably from August through September, so then we have 30 semis that'll bring soil once a week, or one semi a week will bring soil.
Usually one truck.
Right, one truck a week. And then you'll have pots come in December, November timeframe, so you'll have one or two trucks a week that bring pots. I mean, it's...
There could be a day that there's two semis coming in with something, but that's not every day and it's not all year long, and there's definitely not five semis backed up in our driveway ever. And rarely, there's a semi that comes in late at night and they park and wait to unload in the morning if we're not there. But we'll tell them if they come in late, like call us because we'll come down and unload you, unless they get in real late. So we try to get the truck driver in and out of there, so they usually, that isn't what we try to have them do, is sleep there, and that doesn't happen very often at all.
When they make a delivery to your existing greenhouses you have now, and they come in, unless, if it's 10 o'clock at night and he's going to have to sit somewhere in a neighborhood with his engine running, which normally they do?
Right.
Is it not possible for him to get on inside that gate where he'll be inside your property for his...
Like I said earlier, our property is, the driveway we're talking about is where the railroad used to go through, all the way from Went Street.
But you have a gate all the way in the back, right?
Right, but my point is that there's residential property all the way from Walnut Street all the way to the left.
Across that whole, we've got 40 acres, so across from Highway 77 to Walnut, it's, there's a neighborhood all the way backing up our property along there.
All right, any further questions?
Do you have access to this land, this portion in here from 77?
Yes, we used to have access to Broad Street as well.
Why don't you use your semis from 77?
School traffic.
School traffic is very bad over there.
We had accidents.
All the kids walking and stuff.
I mean, is it just a complaint that they have, seem like it's just the dust, and if you have access from 77, which is the highway, why not take your trailers from there, semis?
It was a nightmare when we were doing it like that. That's why we moved around. That's the only reason, because traffic is very busy with the school traffic in the mornings, or if it was around 3:00, and we had, I think, two semis that took it too short and had an accident over the past, how many years, when we were doing it?
Right, there's a much larger ditch over there.
It was a big congestion, so that's why we changed it. 77 isn't very accommodating for semis over where our driveway is.
And last time we were here, asking to build greenhouses there, we didn't have a potential increase in revenue and whatnot for the city, but this, when was it last? We lost our garden center downtown, so we bought, purchased a new three-acre property across from Ace Hardware, and hopefully, we will be generating some more revenue by growing more plants in this area because we're going to be expanding that greenhouse or the garden center downtown.
Yes, we most definitely will be with our retail location. There will be more tax dollars. There will be more hiring at that location. And what we're trying to do is expand what we grow to provide more to our terracottas in Guthrie, whereas now we service 500-mile radius, so we sell to like Atwoods, West Lakes, and all those kind of people. We're trying to grow more so we can have more in our garden center as well and grow it. So it will, there will be more tax money in Guthrie at this point.
How many employees does it take to run the six acres? Do you have an idea?
You mean the new, the stuff that we're trying to...
Like when you're planning or your...
Like the addition of what would be growing or what we have right now?
No, what you plan on growing.
We won't hire any people for that growing, that additional growing. What we're saying is we want to grow more to sell or retail, and we'll have to hire more people at retail because we're building a bigger retail center.
All right, any further questions or comments?
Yeah, and it's actually, you can only fit about two acres where the plant's on, it's six acres, because three of the acres are all the creek.
Right.
And then there's probably an acre on the residential side of our driveway as well, plus the driveway. That's at least an acre.
Yeah, because the site plan that was submitted shows a two-acre layout.
Right.
Yeah, but it's a 6.16 acre parcel.
Right.
I'm making motion for approval subject to 50 feet. You said 15 feet, that's what the city requires. I would like to have 50 foot of the pavement or concrete. That way, because the most, it seems like complaints were about the dust, so we're trying to...
The road is 800 feet long. That's why it's not concrete already.
It's 800 feet.
If it was 50 feet, we'd already have paved the whole thing.
How wide is existing road now?
It's as wide as railroad tracks. I mean, it's big.
16 to 18 foot wide?
Yeah, probably. Plenty for two cars to pass each other.
Is it gravel now or rotor mill?
Crushed asphalt.
Crushed asphalt.
Right.
So you don't have any dust?
Not really, no.
That road has been in there for how long? Do we have a record? Forever?
Well, the railroad tracks were there forever, but we purchased the property in '90...
It's been a number of years. I don't offhand, it's been a number of years. Okay, so, just so we go back, we have a motion to approve this special use permit, but with the condition that 50 feet of that driveway be paved. Okay.
Let me ask a question. May I respond to...
Thank you. I'm going to defer to the commission as to...
Yeah, because we're past the public hearing part. We're at the motion and discussion with the commission.
Yeah, because if you can, because they...
You were...
That's irrelevant to this committee of our legal matters, so I need to respond to that.
What are you trying to respond to?
I just wanted to point out their, sorry, their issue with 77 and there being schools on that road. There are schools on Walnut, too. Our cross-country team runs back and forth on Walnut all the time. And then the main issue that I have is not dust. I don't have little kids. The dust doesn't bother me. The traffic bothers me, but it's the noise. And I know they said that they're not in charge of the noise. That's a city thing, but under the nuisance ordinance, it's the property owner's issue to resolve the nuisance, not the complainant. So, I mean, that is going to be an issue for city, Mr. Wheeler, to decide, but...
But don't you think as a property owner, they have a right to use their property?
Absolutely, but this isn't the only property they have. This is the only property my family owns. I mean, this is all we have. They've got plenty of resources that they can expand, they can...
If I can remind the chair that we had ended public hearing, we're into the deliberation of the planning commission.
We need to, we have a motion on the table. We need to continue, we need to continue our discussion as a commission. This is our meeting. And we've heard from the neighbors.
Can someone ask a question?
I would like to talk to my commission right now at this point.
Because we have a motion on the floor.
We're going to have the plank covered.
Yeah. Is there a second? Because we'll need a second, and then we can still have discussion.
This is with the 50-foot?
Yes.
A clarification of the 50-foot. Somebody needs to explain me.
My assumption is that it would be from the existing edge of pavement on Walnut, 50 feet to the west.
The existing width of the drive?
Yes.
That's the length, the requirement, but the city is 15 feet.
15, correct.
So I'm making a motion for 50 feet.
Right. But Mr. McBride was asking if that's obviously also for the width, the proper width as well.
Existing width of the drive that's there now?
I am not familiar with the width. If you want to make a motion to make that wider, that...
We would have it done at the, we would have it done to what is normally required, which is 20 feet. The minimum width is usually 20 feet.
With a commercial approach?
Yeah.
How much land do we have over there in frontage with Walnut, may I ask, sir? You have quite a...
You mean the total acreage of the parcel?
No, I'm talking about the frontage there. You have more than...
Oh, the length of that?
Yeah, more than 20 feet, actually, but is that what you have in mind?
Yeah.
Make it wider, 25 feet.
Well, I mean, his existing driveway's plenty of width now, but if he does a commercial driveway, then he's going to taper it in.
Yeah, because the minimum width required for a drive like that is 20 feet.
Yeah.
Even in a, whether it's residential, commercial, otherwise, because that's also the minimum that is required to get a fire truck down, is 20 feet.
Are you keeping your motion?
Yes, sir. Okay. Do we have a second?
You can amend it if you want to.
And if there's no second, that's fine. That motion will die. I'm just making sure.
I don't know what 50 foot is.
Okay, so at this point, that motion dies for lack of second. Now you guys can still obviously discuss.
So is it possible to ask a question now?
Just one minute. We've heard from the applicant, we've heard from the citizens, and we'd like to discuss as the commission. After there's a motion and a second, we will have...
My name was put into the conversation, so I should have a right to respond to that.
Ma'am, please, I need a gavel. We're trying to conduct our business as the commission right now. We need to discuss amongst ourselves. Thank you so much.
Yeah, that's, if you want to make some kind, how much is the requirement for fire truck, that can I ask?
Well, again, the minimum width is 20 feet, you know. A fire truck could still get down that road if it has to in the current condition.
If they're talking about semi-truck, it might need additional.
Well, what I'm saying is, you've got an audience that's complaining about the road, and you're going to do a commercial driveway. He has a 20-foot milled asphalt drive there existing, so to say, "I want you to do 50 foot of some type of paving," doesn't cure their problem, and it doesn't help their problem either. So I can't see adding 50 foot of a paved driveway when residents are always down one side.
But they mentioned that they were going to pave the whole thing.
I would love to have a better, more slowly, where I'm with that. If we can afford it, that's the goal. It's a lot of money for a 80-foot track.
You could add two and make it 100. Longer, all the way to the, I don't know how long we do it, this is what, 250 feet?
I agree. I don't know that that would really address the concerns. I think the concerns are, go beyond this particular application. There's conflict, it seems, between the property owner and the surrounding neighborhood because the neighborhoods grew up around it, and, you know, this particular property, I don't believe should have ever been zone residential because nothing residential can be constructed there.
Well, I think the greenhouse and the residential area all grew together at the same time.
And I think this is a pretty low end...
The greenhouse was there when the residential area came in, so it's always been there.
Planting flowers is about the lowest intensity use I could imagine for a piece of property. So do we have another motion, or do we have...
I make a motion that gets approved according to staff's recommendation.
Okay. So a motion to approve with staff's condition. Do we have a second?
I will second that.
Okay.
Ma'am, if you would like to speak about your concern, and then if we have any further comments or discussion before we vote.
Thank you.
Yes. We're just trying to go through our procedure.
I understand. I'm in the sorority, and we have to follow those type of procedures, so I understand. And I apologize for speaking out of turn, but my name was brought up and injected into the conversation. The information that she said about our legal case has nothing to do with their use of their property. My, I bought my property from Sylvia Oak sold me my home in 2001 from Mr. Bennett. I don't know if you guys remember Mr. Bennett, that ran Anthony's Downtown, Robert Bennett. I purchased it from him. When I purchased the property, my fence line, which this is irrelevant to this committee about what's going on, so she did not give me anything. Mr. Frank Davis, do you guys know him? He was my attorney, who actually has issues with him on the property that they have down Walnut Street, where Ms. Davis, who was my sixth-grade teacher, resides. There's a big weed farm that shows bright lights in the sky every night. He had issues with him as well. So he was my attorney, because a long time ago, before she bought it from, I guess it's her dad, I don't know, I'm not in her business like that, we had an issue with my fence. My fence, when I bought the property, was there and laid that way, and Mr. Bennett would maintain all of that land from what was told to me by Mr. Ikus. Do you guys know Mr. Ikus? He actually lived in the house that's right across the street from the property. He was a mason, and he told me, Mr. Bennett was a mason as well, I'm a part of Order of the Eastern Star, that the masons gave that property to Mr. Bennett, because Mr. Bennett maintained, the six acres that we're talking about that's in question here, so I don't have access to the mason logs, but they gave the property to Mr. Bennett because Mr. Bennett maintained and cut and kept it, lawn and manicured all the time. So he put his fence up at his home where he split it off, and he did that because of the easement. There's plumbing in the back of my house, and then around, along the fence line is the utility pieces, so it really is an easement in an alleyway. So neither here nor there, I am the owner of that property because of the state law of Oklahoma, intimate adverse possession. Because my fence has sat on the property for 15 years, I am entitled to the property. And Mr. Frank Davis passed away, as soon as Mr. Frank Davis passed away, these individuals came against me and said that I had to prove that that was my property. So I got an attorney, I don't know if you know Mr. Davis, he has property off of Seward, out in Seward, Oklahoma, do you know the Davises, representing me, and that, I've got everything legalized, and that is my property. So nobody gave me anything, they did not give me anything. By state law of Oklahoma, it's my land. So that's irrelevant to this committee? Am I right or am I wrong? Did you guys need to know all of that? No. But she injected that into the conversation. She injected that into the conversation, so I needed to speak on that. This is not a court of law, so I think that that probably should have been addressed in front of a judge.
It's been noted, we have a motion and a second.